Pero, pero, ¿qué pasa? ¿Consular?
Consular.
Dito que no es un sabor. Oye, Ben, Johnka, porque me está llamando la atención sobre el solar. Alerta, alerta, stop not in an hour.
¿Cuál es el solar?
Solar. Ay, ¿está listo ya, Johnny? ¿Listo ya? Espera. ¿Vino los otros? ¿Listo ya? Kong, Kong.
Sir.
Está ahí ya. De, de esto.
La sesión se llama orden. Todos se pidió que levantaran para escuchar el cantar del antemio nacional.
(Cantando)
Por favor, permanezcan en pie para una oración de un minuto que será dirigida por el honorable Neti Agabao.
Dios mío, nos damos gracias por otro día. Al final de nuestra semana de trabajo, pedimos su guía mientras seguimos nuestro trabajo como legisladores. Que siempre recordemos que el cargo público es una confianza pública y que lo que hacemos en estos halls de congresos afecta la vida del pueblo filipino. Guíenos siempre y nos acercemos cada vez más a usted mientras pasamos por las muchas tareas que tenemos hoy. Ayúdanos a tomar decisiones justas y justas y nos permitan discernir correctamente para que lo que hacemos refleje su voluntad santa. Nuestro país enfrenta muchos desafíos porque son tiempos difíciles. Pero nos confiamos en usted y que a través de usted, con los aconsejos del Espíritu Santo, creemos que podremos resolverlos. Todo esto le pedimos humildemente en nombre del Padre, del Hijo y del Espíritu Santo a través de la intercesión de nuestra bendecida Madre, Rey de los Cielos y la Tierra. Amén.
Presidente de la mayoría.
Madam presidenta, me parece que difundimos el llamado de la ronda.
¿Hay alguna objeción? El presidente no. La motion es aprobada.
Madam presidenta, me parece que difundimos el aprobamiento del journo de la reunión previa.
¿Hay alguna objeción? El presidente no. La motion es aprobada. Presidente de la mayoría.
Madam presidenta, me parece que procedamos con la referencia al negocio y pidiendo que el secretario general se dirija a leer los títulos de los billetes y resoluciones en primera lectura así como comunicaciones. Así que me parece, madam presidenta.
¿Hay alguna objeción? El presidente no. El secretario general se dirige a leer la referencia al negocio.
Referencia al negocio, billete de primera lectura, House Bill 8542, excomiendo del impuesto de ingresos la compensación dada a personas que realizan servicio electoral para elecciones locales o nacionales, representantes Tinio y Castro France.
Para el comité sobre las formas y medidas.
House Bill 8543, reconociendo que la Academia de la Faith es una institución educativa de carácter internacional y proporcionando mecanismos en el grano de ciertos prerogatives conducivos a su crecimiento, representante Lenete.
Para el comité sobre educación básica y cultura.
House Bill 8544, estableciendo una política nacional anti-doping en deportes en conformidad con la Convención Internacional de la UNESCO contra el doping en deportes, estableciendo la organización nacional anti-doping filipina, representante Roapuno.
Para el comité sobre la desarrollo de la juventud y deportes.
House Bill número 8545 y 8546, amendando secciones 43 y 62 de RA 10963, representantes Villarin y Vini Nola Ortega.
Para el comité sobre las formas y medidas.
House Bill 8547, promoviendo la creación de trabajos de color verde, proporcionando una iniciativa estratégica para la implementación, representante Nieto.
Para el comité sobre trabajo y empleo.
House Bill 8548, aumentando el salario mínimo de Casambayes, amendando por despliegue sección 24 de RA 10361, representante Nieto.
Para el comité sobre trabajo y empleo.
House Bill 8549, amendando el Código Electoral Omnibus de los Filipinos para institucionalizar debates electorales y para compelir la atendencia de candidatos aquí, representante Rochamora.
Para el comité sobre operaciones electorales y reformas.
House Bill 8550, fortaleciendo el Bureau de Finanzas Local del Gobierno, representante Romero.
Para el comité sobre gobierno local.
House Bill 8551, estableciendo el campus PUP San Juan en la ciudad de San Juan Metro Manila para ser conocido como el campus PUP San Juan, representante Ronaldo Zamora.
Para el comité sobre contratación y educación técnica.
Resoluciones, House Resolution 2289, transmitiendo la felicitación colectiva de la Casa de Representantes a Carlos Yulo en su destacado logro en los últimos Gimnasios Artísticos y Gimnasiales Mundiales de Qatar, representante Vargas.
Para el comité sobre la desarrollo de la juventud y deportes.
House Resolution 2290, dirigiendo el comité sobre trabajo y empleo y el comité sobre trabajadores filipinos extranjeros de la Casa para investigar la muerte reciente de Emerita Ganaban y OFW en Arabia Saudita, representante Vargas.
Para el comité sobre roles.
House Resolution 2291, dirigiendo el comité sobre asuntos de trabajadores extranjeros para averiguar las protecciones garantizadas por la Dole, POEA, OWA, DFA y MIA contra el abandono de los barcos de mar en la luz del abandono de los 21 barcos de mar filipinos en Caquinada, Puerto India, representante Manalo.
Para el comité sobre roles.
House Resolution 2292, dirigiendo el comité sobre asuntos de trabajadores extranjeros para averiguar la decisión marina de suspender el conducto de exámenes teóricos desde el 29 de diciembre de 2018 hasta el 30 de abril de 2019 y su impacto en la depdoyamiento de barcos de mar, representante Manalo.
Para el comité sobre roles.
House Resolution 2293, congratulando, homenajear a los atletas y coaches del equipo paralímpico de Filipinas por ganar medallas en el tercer Paralympic de Asia, celebrado en Jakarta, Indonesia, y los oficiales del comité paralímpico de Filipinas dirigido por su presidente, el Sr. Michael Baredo, representante Australia.
Para el comité sobre la desarrollo de la juventud y deportes.
House Resolution 2294, obligando al comité sobre drogas peligrosas a investigar la proliferación de drogas prohibidas en el juzgado subprovincial de Samar, ubicado en Calbaog City, representante Salmento Edgar Meri.
Para el comité sobre roles.
House Resolution 2295, dirigiendo el comité apropiado a la Casa para averiguar para ver las asesinatos en Sagai City, Negros Occidental, representantes Benitez y Paduano.
Para el comité sobre roles.
Comité de Reportes, Reporte número 924, por el comité sobre empresas gubernamentales y privatización en el House Bill número 8552.
Para el comité sobre roles.
Reporte número 925, por el comité sobre alojamiento y desarrollo urbano en el House Bill número 8553.
Para el comité sobre roles.
Reporte número 926, por el comité sobre formas y medidas en el House Bill número 8554.
Para el comité sobre roles. Presidente de la mayoría.
Ay, perdón. Madam presidenta, me parece que se aprobó el journo número 27 para noviembre 12 de 2018.
¿Hay alguna objeción? El presidente no. La motion es aprobada.
Madam presidenta, me parece que hay una suspensión de un minuto.
Suspensión, sesión suspendida. Uh-oh.
Esto es una. Esto es una.
Esto es para mí.
¿Puedes, puedes?
¿Amnistía?
...
Sesión es terminada. Presidente de la mayoría.
Madam presidenta, les damos la bienvenida a los invitados de el secretario general Pia Kayatano. Son los primeros máster en administración pública de la Universidad de Taguig. Estos son Lawrence M. Vivencio, Paulino Ayang Ang y todos los primeros máster en administración pública de la Universidad de Taguig.
Los invitados del honorable Kayatano son reconocidos, por favor levanten y bienvenidos a los representantes. Presidente de la mayoría.
Madam presidenta, me parece que procedamos a la consideración de medidas bajo el calendario de negocios.
¿Hay alguna objeción? El presidente no. La motion es aprobada.
Madam presidenta, me parece que consideramos en primera lectura el House Bill número 8554 bajo el reporte comité número 926 y dirijo al secretario general a leer el título del bill.
¿Hay alguna objeción? El presidente no. El general se pidió que lea el título del bill.
House Bill 8554, un acto que mejore la administración y recopilación de ingresos al dar amnistía sobre todas las impuestos internos impuestos por el gobierno nacional para el año 2017 y años anteriores.
Presidente de la mayoría.
Madam presidenta, me parece que reconozcamos al presidente, la persona de la comisión de formas y medidas el honorable representante Geng Swan Sing.
El honorable Geng Swan Sing es ahora reconocido.
Gracias, madam presidenta. Estoy ante esta Cámara de agosto con la esperanza de su apoyo en el Act Amnistía Nacional de 2018. Benjamin Franklin ha frecuentemente sido citado para haber dicho: "Nada puede ser más seguro en este mundo que la muerte y los impuestos". Por tanto, un contribuyente que ha sido remitido en su o su deber legal declarar activos y pagar los correctos impuestos debe siempre recibir alivio de uno de los banes de una vida. Este bill da la oportunidad a los contribuyentes a trabajar comenzar con una limpieza y ser 100% complaciente de impuestos en el futuro. Para ambos sectores formales e informales, serán absuelos al solucionar todos sus activos no declarados y impuestos anteriores sin temor a penalties civiles, criminales o administrativas. El gobierno ha proyectado aumentar 114.8 millones de euros en revenues, claros cargos de demanda en ambos procedimientos administrativos y mejorar la administración de ingresos al tener una base de impuestos más amplia. La última amnistía que tuvimos en este país fue en 2007 bajo el Act Republic número 9480 donde había alrededor de 25,017 solicitantes que resultaron en una recopilación que contuvo which resulted in a collection that amounted to 7.2 billion pesos, translating 2.07% of the gross domestic product. For the next 10 years, this will be the next amnesty that we will be applying in conjunction with one of the President Rodrigo Duterte's legislative priorities. This measure is divided into three parts. The first part provides for estate tax amnesty. For two years, the authorized administrator or executor, or in the absence thereof, the legal heirs and recognized successors may avail of estate tax amnesty at a rate of 6% of the net estate for taxable year 2017 and prior years. Estate taxes have a very small percentage of the tax collection in the Bureau of Internal Revenue. This means that despite the increase in numbers of debts, there is a greater percentage of the legal heirs who did not file the required estate tax return. Few may have known that even if the estate is exempt from taxes, legal heirs must still file the estate tax return. Once the heirs have failed to file a return within a certain period, penalties and interest will be incurred. To this, the heirs will now be noncompliant, hence preventing the heirs to use their properties, and as the time goes by, such properties will become idle and unproductive. More idle and unproductive properties are not good for the economy as more income opportunity will be lost. To unlock this embassy, we need this estate tax amnesty to be passed immediately. The second part of this bill is the general tax amnesty. This encompasses all national internal revenue taxes like income tax, value-added tax, donor's tax, percentage tax, documentary stamp tax, excise tax, among others. However, this bill specifically excludes the value-added tax and excise tax collected by the Bureau of Customs. It will be a one-time opportunity for the erring taxpayer to file and pay their tax returns within one year, worry-free from any penalties, surcharges, even criminal, civil, or administrative cases as long as the declaration is truthful and honest. At a rate of 2% of the total assets, the taxpayer will have a cordial relationship with tax authorities within one year and may move forward with a clean slate. Lastly, the third part of this bill, and perhaps the most exceptional feature of this amnesty bill, is the tax amnesty on delinquencies. This type of amnesty aims to decongest the dockets of BIR, Regional Trial Court, Court of Appeals, and the Supreme Courts relating to those delinquent accounts with final assessments, those that have become final and executive, and those with existing pending tax evasion cases. The government is moving forward from this unending and tiring pursuits of noncompliant citizens by encouraging the taxpayer to merely pay at a rate of 40, 50, 60, respectively. Of the basic which excludes the penalties and surcharges, should there be any imposition or decision to pay, I am urging every member of this August Chamber to positively act on this measure in the spirit of reconciliation and national unity between the government and citizenry, and likewise, as a means of increasing the level of tax consciousness. Thank you, Madam Speaker, thank you, distinguished colleagues.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, considering that the Honorable Edselagman signified his intention to interpolate, but would need more time to review the bill, I move for the suspension of consideration of House Bill Number 8554.
Is there an objection? The Chair hears none, motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Motion to suspend, Madam Speaker.
Session suspended.
... Second, the chair. Ready. The panel of the committee. The committee. Who can sponsor? Asante Kong Maris. Interpolation. Ah, sa. Majority. Chiki. How Chiki's role?
The government will be able to collect hundred fourteen. One one four point eight billion pesos. Well, I think, you know, the question of what's a proportion of the people. What?
Because, I don't know, I don't know. I mean, I love their love speed words. Something. Mano. And that you know, ay, mano. Come.
Session issue. Madam Speaker, we are in receipt of a certification issued by the Commission on Elections, dated November nine, two thousand and eighteen, certifying Mr. Pepito M. Pico as the next-in-line nominee of the Democratic Independent Workers' Association, DIWA, party list in the House of Representatives, and that Mr. Pepito M. Pico can assume the position vacated by Representative Emilene Aglipay Villar. Madam Speaker, pursuant to the aforementioned certificate, I move that we allow Mr. Pepito M. Pico, representative of party list Democratic Independent Workers' Association, DIWA, to take his oath in open session. May we, there being no objection, Madam Speaker, may we direct the Secretary General to call the representative of party list DIWA to take his oath before this body.
Please raise your right hand and wave your over. I.
May everyone please rise.
Oh, Basa Benu Six E, Malalulun Street, Barangay Thirty-Two, Bokhawat City.
Hereby solemnly swear.
Hereby solemnly swear.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
The duties of my present position.
The duties of my present position.
And of all others, I may hereafter hold.
And of others, I may hereafter hold.
Under the Republic of the Philippines.
Under the Republic of the Philippines.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Republic of the Philippines.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will obey the laws, legal orders, and decrees.
That I will obey the laws, legal orders, and decrees.
Provoked by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines.
Provoked by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines.
That I impose it obligation upon myself voluntarily.
That I will impose this obligation on myself voluntarily.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
On purpose of evasion.
On purpose of evasion.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Congratulations.
Madam Speaker. In order to allow our members to meet and extend their greetings to the Honorable Pepito M. Pico of the Democratic Independent Workers' Association, party list, may I move that we suspend our session for a few minutes. So move.
Session suspended.
Session resumed.
Madam Speaker, on October ten, twenty eighteen, we ratified the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill Number five seven four five and Senate Bill Number one two three three on the Coconut Farmers and Industry Development Trust Fund Act. With leave of the House, Madam Speaker, I move that we reconsider the ratification of the set by Cameral Conference Committee Report. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we request that we recognize the guest of Deputy Speaker Rosemary Arenas from the Municipality Government of Bayambang, headed by the Vice Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor Raúl Sambangan, Attorney Raimundo Bautista, Legal Officer and Chief of Staff of the Mayor, SB Member Philip Di Malanta, Dumaranta, SB Martin Terrado, SB Member Amori Junyo, SK Federation Gabriel Fernández, Dr. Henry Fernández, Consultant, Levin Uy, Consultant, Dr. Nicolas Miguel, Consultant, Dr. Pedro Zaragoza, Consultant, Mr. Pasqual Manalan, Consultant, Ani I. De León, Municipal Assessor, Luisita B. Ranan, Municipal Treasurer, Jovenci La Sciti, Administration Aid, and Wenchi Arthasio Barangay Kagawad, all guests of Deputy Speaker Rosemary Arenas. So move, Madam Speaker.
Please rise, and thank you for coming to the House of Representatives to all our municipal mayor officials of Bayambang. Thank you for coming. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number eight five five four, and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill eight five five four, an act enhancing revenue administration collection by granting amnesty on all unpaid internal revenue taxes imposed by the national government for taxable year twenty seventeen and prior years.
Madam Speaker, I move that we now open the period of interpolation.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we close the period of interpolation.
Is there no objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there no objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Ways and Means, Honorable Representative Swansing, for the committee amendments.
The Honorable Swansing is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On page two, line forty-seven, insert a new section seven to read as follows. Estate tax return filed shall be presumed as true and correct, except where the tax returns are proven to be understated by thirty percent or more. The proof of understatement of state of tax, estate tax return, shall be established by the Bureau of Internal Revenue in a proceedings initiated by the Bureau of Internal Revenue or any of its authorized representatives or third party.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the committee amendments as narrated by the Honorable Swansing.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we hear the additional amendments from the Honorable Swansing.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Honorable Swansing is recognized.
On page four, lines thirty-five and thirty-six, delete the phrase "a third party informer, comma, or at the instance of a party other than." The section now reads, "The statement of total assets filed shall be presumed as true and correct, except where the total assets are proven to be understated by thirty percent or more," period. "The proof of understatement of statement of total assets shall be established by the Bureau of Internal Revenue in a proceedings initiated by the Bureau of Internal Revenue or any of its authorized representatives or third party," period.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the committee amendments as stated by Honorable Swansing.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Amendment is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Swansing for additional amendments.
The Honorable Swansing is recognized for further amendments.
In addition, Madam Speaker, we will add the phrase and accordingly renumber the sections of the bill. So move, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the committee amendments as stated by the Honorable Swansing.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable, we recognize the Honorable Evie Escudero for additional committee amendments.
The Honorable Escudero is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page seven, line seven, under section sixteen of the bill, we would like to add the following. On page 7, line 7, under section 16 of the bill, we would like to add the following, letter D, withholding agents with respect to their withholding tax liabilities. So I move, Madam Speaker.
What is the, um, what does this sponsor say?
We accept the proposed amendment.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the committee amendments as stated by the Honorable Escudero.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no other committee amendments, I move that we now proceed to consider the individual amendments, if any.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading on House Bill Number 8554.
All those in favor of House Bill 8554 as amended, please aye. All those against, please say. The ayes have it. House Bill 8554 as amended is now approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 8552, contained in Committee Report Number 924, and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill 8552, an act further strengthening the Philippine Coconut Authority, PCA, amending for the purpose Section 4 of Presidential Decree Number 1468, otherwise known as the Revised Coconut Industry Code as amended.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Vice Chair for the Committee on Government Enterprise and Privatization, the Honorable Mario "Victorio" Marvi Marinho.
The Honorable Marinho is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Uh, kindly consider the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech of the said bill, Madam Speaker. I so move.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we close the period of interpolation.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, both on the committee or individual, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 8552.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we take up some administrative matters? I move that we designate the following members to the Bicameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 6938 and Senate Bill Number 1971 regarding the Child Safety in Motor Vehicles Act. These are Representative Cesar Sarmiento, Representative Mariano Michael Villarde Jr., Representative Johnny Pimentel, Representative Rosano Rafino Viazon, Representative John Marvin Nieto, Representative Florida Robes, Representative Anthony Bravo.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The following conference representatives, Sarmiento, Villarde, Pimentel, Viazon, Nieto, Robes, Bravo, are hereby designated. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Bicameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 725 and Senate Bill Number 1749 regarding the free use of facilities in land transport terminals. These are Representative Cesar Sarmiento, Representative Strike Revilla, Representative Fernando Gonzalez, Representative Johnny Pimentel, Representative Edgar Mary Sarmiento, Representative Winston Castillo, Representative Julieta Cortuna.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Representatives Sarmiento, Revilla, Gonzalez, Pimentel, Sarmiento, Castillo, Cortuna are hereby designated. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Bicameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 8374 and Senate Bill Number 1280 regarding the revised Corporation Code as follows. Representative Virgen Elviron, Representative Xavier Jesús Romualdo, Representative Rosana Vergara, Representative Manuel Antonio Subiri, Representative Gastambuntin, Representative Marlin Premicias Agabas, Representative Evelina Escudero, Representative Arthur Yap, Representative Ron Salo, Representative Arlin Arcillas. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there no objection? The Chair hears none. The following representatives, Veron, Romualdo, Vergara, Subiri, Tambuntin, Agabas, Escudero, Yap, Salo, Arcillas are now designated. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Bicameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 725 and Senate Bill 1749? No, Senate Bill, House Bill Number 6604, Senate Bill Number 1985 regarding regulating the rates of political propaganda on television, radio, and print during an electoral campaign. As follows, Representative Sherwin Tugna, Representative Carlos Roman Oybarreta, Representative Jose Panganiban Jr., Representative Chiki Rova Puno, Representative Danilo Suárez. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there no objection? The Chair hears none. The following representatives are now designated. Representative Tugna, Oybarreta, Panganiban Jr., Rova Puno, and Suárez. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we designate the following members of the Bicameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 8239 and Senate Bill Number 1477 on the promotion of positive and nonviolent child discipline. As follows, Representative Divina Gracio, Representative Bernadette Herrera D., Representative Pia Cayetano, Representative María Lourdes Acosta Alba, Representative Franz Castro, Representative Antonio Tinho. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The following representatives are now designated. Representative Gracio, Herrera D., Cayetano, Acosta Alba, Castro, Tinho. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, good afternoon. We are in receipt of a message from the Senate informing the House that the Senate passed with amendments, House Bill Number 5576 entitled an act establishing a career guidance and counseling program for all secondary schools. We have been advised that the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, sponsor of the said House Bill, as well as the author thereof, have no objections to the amendments introduced thereto by the Senate. Madam Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 5576.
Is there no objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we recognize the guests of Representative from the Lone District of Iligan City, Honorable Frederick W. Xiao. They are the persons representing the Football for Humanity I-55 Talent House and Lost in the Philippines, and they are Bel Tionko, Chris Tomas, Carmina Cruz, Julian Marquez, Matthew Stelly, Edward Roomfiled, and Ben Gulick.
The guests of Honorable Xiao, please rise. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we are in receipt of a message from the Senate informing the House that the Senate passed with amendments, House Bill Number 7166 entitled an act covering the Kabasalan Institute of Technology in the Municipality of Kabasalan Province of Zamboanga Sibugai into the Zamboanga Sibugai Polytechnic Institute. We have been advised that the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, sponsor of the said House Bill, as well as the author thereof, have no objections to the amendments introduced thereto by the Senate. Madam Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 7166.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we are in receipt of a message from the Senate informing the House that the Senate passed with amendments, House Bill Number 7264 entitled an act establishing the Cordillera State Polytechnic Skills Institute, integrating the Technical Education and Skills Development Authority, TESTA, training centers, and TESTA-supervised state-run technical vocational institution, or TBIs, in the Cordillera Administrative Region. We have been advised that the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, sponsor of the said House Bill, as well as the author thereof, have no objections to the amendments introduced thereto by the Senate. Madam Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 7264. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there no objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we move to call the roll of members.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll.
Roll call of members, honorable members, Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalion, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Macsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barzaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Ose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Viazon, Biliones, Viron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulut Bektang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixto Robiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serafika, Serides, Chavez, Chipeco, Ko, Kawanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Cristólogo, Kuah, Qaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venecia, De Vera, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, De Lozomontalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Mohamed, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Feder Juliet, Feder Luis, Feriol, Floirendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuente Bella, Garbin, Garcia Gwendolin, Garcia Ose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Heron, Go Anna Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Herrera D., Hoffer, Alusos, Javier, Ko, Conghun, Labatlabat, Lakson, Lagman, Lanete, Laogan, Lazatin, Liachon, Li, Limkaychong, Lobregat, López Benher, López Carlo, López Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadatus Uharto, Mangodadatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Meliana, Mendín, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jeriko, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Owaminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini Nola, Pakiau. Pakiao. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Panganiban. Panotes. Papandayan. Pichai. Pico. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Primicias Agabás. Kimbo. Radaza. Ramiresato. Ramos. Relampagos. Revilla. Rowapuno. Robes. Rochamora. Rodríguez Isidro. Rodríguez Maximo. Roman. Romero. Romualdes. Romualdo. Roque. Saqdalan. Sagarbaria. Sahali. Salceda. Salimbangan. Salo. Salon. Sambar. Sandoval. Sangkopan. Santos Repto. Sarmiento Cesar. Sarmiento Edgar Mary. Savellano. Semah. Shaw. Silverio. Singson. Swan Sing Estrelita. Swan Sing Horacio. Suárez. Si Alvarado. Tambunting. Tan Angelina. Tan Milagrosa. Tan Shurni. Tejada. Teves. Tianco. Ting. Tiño. Tolentino. Treñas. Tugna. Tupas. Ti. Umali. Unabia. Ungab. Uniko. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Uy Pareta. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Velarde. Velasco. Velasco Catera. Veloso. Vergara. Villafuerte. Villanueva. Villaraza Suárez. Villarica. Villarin. Violago. Yap Arthur. Yap Melicio. Yap Victor. You. Zamora Maria Carmen. Zamora Ronaldo. Zarate. Zubiri. The Honorable Speaker is present.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 186 members responded to the call.
With 186 members responding to the call, the Chair declares a quorum. Majority Leader.
Yes, Madam Speaker, before we proceed with the individual amendments of House Bill 8552, we would like to reiterate the memorandum issued by the Secretary General for all the members of the House regarding the recall of Protocol Plate Number 8. And if I would like to read the record and reiterate to the members, we have received reports that certain vehicles with Protocol Plate Number 8 have been spotted in decent places or figured in crime-related activities. In view of this development, the Honorable Speaker has given instructions for the immediate recall of all protocol plates issued during the 16th Congress and earlier. Kindly return these car plates to the Office of the Secretary General for proper acknowledgement. Signed, the Secretary General.
The manifestation of the Majority Leader is now noted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number 8552 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is now directed to read the title of the bill. Majority Leader.
House Bill Number 8552, an act further strengthening the Philippine Coconut Authority, amending for the purpose Section 4 of Presidential Degree Number 1468, otherwise known as the Vice Coconut Industry Code as amended.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bills that we just closed the period of amendments, I move that we reconsider the termination of the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of individual amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Jose Panganiban Jr. of ANAC IP Partilis for his individual amendments.
The Honorable Panganiban Jr. is now recognized?
Likewise, Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Chairman of the Committee, the Vice Chairman of the Committee on Government Enterprises.
The Honorable Vice Chair is now recognized? Majority Leader.
We accept, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the individual amendments as stated by the Honorable Panganiban.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker. May I read the proposed individual amendment to House Bill Number 8552?
Please proceed.
The first amendment would be on page 1, line 5, section 1. Delete the word 11 and in lieu thereof, insert the word 15.
We accept, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
I move that, Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the individual amendment as stated by the Honorable Panganiban.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
On page 1, line 11, section 1, letter B, after the word "Authority," delete the phrase "as Vice Chairperson."
What did the sponsors say?
We accept, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the individual amendment as stated by the Honorable Panganiban.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Number 3, on page 2, line 2, same section, letter C, after the acronym BOF, insert the phrase "as Vice Chairperson."
We accept, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the individual amendment as stated by the Honorable Panganiban.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
On the same page, line 8, same section, insert the following: letter E, the Secretary of the Department of Science and Technology, BOST; F, the Secretary of the Department of Trade and Industry, DTI; G, the President of the Land Bank of the Philippines, Land Bank; H, the President of the Development Bank of the Philippines, DBP, or their respective duly designated permanent representatives. Thereafter, renumber the enumerated members accordingly, such that on line 8, letter F shall become letter I.
What did the sponsors say?
We accept, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the individual amendment as stated by the Honorable Panganiban.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
On page 3, same section, letter D, line 28, between the words 2 and the article 3, delete the word "establish" and in lieu thereof, insert the phrase "review and modify."
What did the sponsors say?
We accept, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the individual amendments as stated by the Honorable Panganiban.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
On page 4, introduce a new section 2 to be read as follows. Section 2 appropriations. The amount needed for the initial implementation of this act shall be charged against the current year's appropriations of the PCA. Thereafter, such sums as may be necessary for its continued implementation shall be included in the General Appropriations Act, GAA, provided that the amount of not less than 10 billion pesos shall be included in the annual appropriations of the PCA, subject to the regular budget process and priorities to augment the coconut farmers' and industry development trust fund, to increase the income of coconut farmers, and to support the development activities of the PCA, provided further that the allocation and use of such annual appropriations shall be reviewed by Congress after six years from the approval of this act. The said appropriations shall be allocated as follows. Letter A, infrastructure program, 20%. B, planting, replanting, and establishment of hybrid coconut nurseries, 20%. C, intercropping, 10%. D, shared facilities, 20%. E, research and development, coconut disease prevention, control, and eradication, 10%. Fertilization, 5%. New products and old derivatives of coconut oil and marketing, 5%. And credit through Land Bank and DBP, 10%. Provided finally that the administrative expenses to implement the programs or projects shall not exceed 10% of the program or project costs.
What did the sponsors say?
All the amendments are accepted, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the individual amendment as stated by the Honorable Panganiban.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendments approved.
That would be all, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no additional individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 8552.
All those in favor of House Bill 8552 as amended, please say aye. All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8552 as amended is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider on second reading, House Bill Number 8179 on Committee Report Number 848, and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is now directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill 8179, an act granting Solar Parasabayan Corporation, a franchise, to construct, install, establish, operate, and maintain distributable power technologies and mini-grid systems throughout the Philippines to improve access to sustainable energy.
Madam Speaker. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the author of the said bill, Honorable Arthur Yap of the 3rd District of Bohol, for his sponsorship message.
The Honorable Arthur Yap is now, Deputy Speaker Arthur Yap is now recognized? Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, colleagues. There is an adage that the only permanent state in life is change. Change is inescapable, especially in this innovation-driven world of ours, Madam Speaker. The typewriter gave way to the word processor, and the telephone gave way to the cellphone. And now the cellphone is being overtaken by data in connecting people. In power, what once was the monolithic power generating and transmission behemoth called the napacor was broken up when the Electric Power Industry Reform Act, or EPRA, was legislated in 2001. In the interest of competition, efficiency, lower rates, and electric power for all Filipino consumers, the EPRA effectively broke up the napacor into generation, transmission, distribution, and retail sales. But Madam Speaker, still seventeen years after we enacted the EPRA law and spending billions in subsidies, the World Bank has said that the Philippines continues to have the most expensive electricity in Southeast Asia and second to the highest power rates in Asia. Presently, Madam Speaker, 2.4 million households remain without power, or about 12 million Filipinos with zero power and many millions more suffering intermittent power. Fifty-eight percent of those households that are suffering are in Mindanao. In fact, more than 50% of households in Tahu Itawi, Sulu, Magindanao, Lanau del Sur, and Masbate have no power. Masbate, Sulu, Palawan, Surigao del Sur, Negros Oriental, Sorsogon, Batanes, Zamboanga City, Occidental Mindoro, and Marinduke are in turn the top ten provinces that suffer from outages per year. There are studies that more than 40 provinces or half of the Philippines provinces are paying more than the national average rate of 11 pesos per kilowatt hour. It is therefore no wonder that in a national survey, Madam Speaker, taken by Pulse Asia just five months ago, 82% of Filipinos are in favor of new options for electric power sources, providers, and utilities. It is also not surprising that in the same survey, 89% of Filipinos are in favor of increasing the use of renewable energy in the country today. We are lucky, Madam Speaker, that we are living at a time when innovation and technological change are providing answers to everyday problems that affect not only our quality of life but the very state and sustainability of our development as cultures, economies, and peoples. Because of advances in solar power and transmission and the current improvements in battery packs, companies all over the world are putting up microgrid solutions to light up and power isolated communities. We need not look far. Locally, we have a shining example of such a company. Solar Parasabayan is using this technology today here locally in the Philippines and has benefited 200,000 people in 12 towns and in nine provinces. Such a company should be welcomed. It should be celebrated because along the way, they are showing us how the private sector without any tax breaks, without any tax subsidies, can power isolated, underserved communities at no cost to the government. Flash on the screen is a satellite picture of the Philippines at night. That is the picture of the Philippines at night. Despite how we have been lionized for our sustained economic growth in the last few years, we can all see how dark and dim our country remains to be. We hope that all of us here can join more than 150 co-authors in effecting a change by supporting House Bill 8179, granting a, let me be very clear, non-exclusive, no tax breaks, no subsidies, private sector-led solar microgrid franchise, which will remain under the policy guidelines of the DOE and the regulatory jurisdiction of the ERC for rate setting, that hopefully will effectively secure for our people the promise enshrined in our constitution of a prosperous and independent nation with the people free from poverty, with a rising standard of living and an improved quality of life for all. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from Buhay Partilis, the Honorable Lito Atienza, for his interpolation.
The Honorable Mayor Congressman Lito Atienza is now recognized? Please proceed.
Madam Speaker. I believe in the very old saying and practice that ladies should be given priority. I see a lady raising her hand, and she has not been given the recognition. and she has not been given the recognition. Unless she has something to say or she is declining, then I am taking the advantage of recognizing this representation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, fellow colleague Congressman Atienza. I appreciate your giving me the opportunity to speak first. May I speak, Madam Speaker?
The Honorable Bergara, with the permission of the Honorable...
Yes, as I mentioned...
We give the floor to the Honorable...
As we mentioned... As we mentioned, Madam Speaker, if the lady representative would like to say something first before we go into the interpolation, we are giving way to her.
Thank you, Honorable colleague. Thank you.
We now recognize the Honorable Ria Bergara. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. May I address the honorable author, Madam Speaker?
Yes, go ahead.
Honorable Speaker, my dear friend Kong Artiap.
Yes, ma'am.
The facts you mentioned in the beginning of the explanatory note are true. As a former member of the power industry, I concur that our country is lagging in its energy development. We have one of the highest energy rates. However, I believe that this Solar Para Sa Bayan is not the solution. I, together with a number of representatives in the 17th Congress, find numerous provisions in this bill to be discordant, unfair, and it effectively creates a monopoly for Solar Para Sa Bayan for all solar installations in our country. This will give this entity undue advantage to set up solar plants, and instead of encouraging healthy competition, it will kill the solar power industry in our country. Therefore, I respectfully request, if you will allow, that we refer this bill back to the Committee on Legislative Franchise for further study, and so we can amend the provisions that are included in this bill, which which will kill competition. I mean, I'm very concerned about this principle of eminent domain. It gives Solar Para Sa Bayan eminent domain for the entire country. This is a privilege or a right only granted to the national government. We are giving it to this one company. This is just one of the many provisions I find problematic. That's just the request, Madam Speaker. If we could bring it back to the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
What does the honorable author say?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. To my dear friend Congressman Bergara. Rather than bring it back, Madam Speaker, to the committee, since it has followed the procedures to get here, maybe we can use the opportunity right now to entertain some of the proposals from the Honorable Congresswoman Bergara if there are some changes that she wants to be made. Because on the issue of eminent domain, Madam Speaker, this is a standard provision that is carried by other utilities franchises. So in fact, the reverse will happen. If the power is not given to this franchise, this franchise will be discriminated against. It is basically an equal protection for all these franchises if this provision is allowed to remain. That's just one comment if we're dealing with if we're dealing with the issue of eminent domain. But allow me to reassure Congress that number 1, this franchise will not just be allowed to indiscriminately operate, Madam Speaker, all over the country because it will still remain under the jurisdiction and policy control of the Department of Energy. It is not going to be allowed to enter franchise areas except only if the franchise area has abandoned a particular area or Solar Para Sa Bayan intends to enter an area which is underserved or unserved. So let us be very clear that this franchise will not give Solar Para Sa Bayan the authority to just enter any franchise area. And the Department of Energy will continue to exercise control over where, what areas it will be allowed to operate under those requirements, under those standards that the area remains underserved or unserved. In the question of rates, Madam Speaker, your honors, neither can Solar Para Sa Bayan just impose any rate at once. Hindi rin pupe pwede. You have to go back to the Energy Regulatory Commission because they are the agency under law that is mandated to regulate rates. So I hope that the House, the Honorable Congresswoman Bergara, can be made to understand and accept the provisions that this is not as open as she thinks it is. It is not as indiscriminate as she thinks it is.
Your answer, please, Honorable Bergara. Please answer that issue now.
Yes, Madam Speaker. I'd like first to tackle the issue of eminent domain and how it is a principle or a privilege granted to electric franchises. And I agree because this electric franchises, whether they're privately held or co-ops, refers to a specific area and they provide a basic necessity, which is electricity. They're the sole provider. Whereas Solar Para Sa Bayan will not be providing electricity... I mean, they'll not be the sole provider. They'll be the secondary source. In fact, contrary to what the honorable author says that they will not just enter any franchise area, on page 1, line 8, it says, "The grantee shall have the right to open a non-discriminatory access to any transmission or distribution system." So that means they can enter any franchise area. They will have access to any transmission system. And that for me is worrisome, having operated utility in the past. We're very careful as to who enters our franchise area because they might install equipment that could disrupt or affect the transmission lines, which will then in turn affect the operations of the distribution utility. And that's why I firmly request, if we could study further the provisions of this House Bill 8179, I agree with the concept that we want to energize and reach this far-flung areas that don't have access to electricity. But having been part of the power industry, solar as a source of power is not the cheapest... It's not the most affordable. I mean, at the end of the day, it's still nuclear. And I don't believe that this is the solution to bring down power rates in our country.
Madam Speaker, if the concern of the honorable representative is delineating the area, that is the purpose of this plenary discussion for. The author is willing to yield to the language that she wants if it will not defeat the basic fundamental objective of the franchise. So if I have... I am actually prepared on page 1, line 4, to write there, to insert the phrase "non-exclusive". On page 1, line 6, I am also prepared to yield that the area to be served will only be delimited to unserved and underserved areas. So, Madam Speaker, I'm willing to yield to amendments. In fact, later on, I know that Congressman Kaloy Uy Barretta will also stand up to make proposals, especially on the areas of rates, on the areas of areas, non-exclusivity, and other matters. So maybe we can allow the Honorable Congresswoman Bergara to take a little time to suggest whatever she wants to suggest, and we can accept it here. So we can yield the floor first to some other legislator who may want to question and interpolate the bill, Madam Speaker.
I would like first to wait for the reply of the Honorable Bergara regarding your question before we go to another legislator. So Honorable Bergara, please answer that issue.
Yes, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Congressman Art. Yes, I will have other clauses to include. One, I'd like a performance clause included into this bill. I'd like to see how serious they are in really reaching the underserved areas. For instance, as soon as this is approved, I'd like to see within 1 year that they're able to set up 50 megawatts of solar grids in these areas that have no power. And subject to their compliance, then the 25-year lease or the 25-year life that is given to them will not be canceled. But if within a year of getting this bill approved and passing to a law, they're unable to implement what they envisioned, then we have every right to cancel the franchise. Are you amendable?
Madam Speaker, allow me to consider the points because it's the first time I'm hearing it. But it strikes me like we're trying to punish somebody who wants to help the situation. Right now, the responsibility of powering our nation belongs to the cooperatives. Now, do the cooperatives have the same bonds that can be forfeited if they have failed in powering up the franchises that they have been granted? Whereas we have here an entity that wants to assist and to help in certain delineated areas, it strikes me like we're punishing the new kid in the block that's trying to help the situation out. But I'm not saying no to what extent that the bond can be imposed. Allow me to study it, Madam Speaker, right now in the course of the debates. And I can answer it appropriately. Just give us a little time and allow the technical staff to do a little back-of-the-envelope computation if this is something that can be allowed. But offhand, that is how I feel about it, Madam Speaker.
What does the Honorable Bergara say?
Madam Speaker, I will prepare the provision and confer with the author, and so we can come up with an acceptable provision. And it's not to punish the entity that wants to actually serve. Actually, this provision is present in NTC franchises. Once they're given a franchise, they have within 2 years to get the radio or the television channel up and running to show that they're committed to honor the terms of the franchise that they are granted. Even for power utilities, there is a clause that if you're unable to service customers within your franchise area, then Congress as a body can revoke your franchise. So it will be along those lines, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Congressman Atienza, for giving me this opportunity. I shall now come up with the amendments and submit it, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Bergara. So can we hear from Congressman Atienza?
Yes, Madam Speaker. If the lady is finished with her manifestation and position on the issue, this representation would like to take advantage of the opportunity to also air our concerns on this measure. But in the process, the lady was proposing that we spend more time reviewing and studying the proposal. Did I hear right? Madam Speaker, she suggested that we give it a little more time to study and make proposals or counter-proposals to improve this particular measure that we are debating on.
What does the honorable author say?
Madam Speaker, that is the purpose why we're having these plenary discussions right now. This does not mean that this franchise is already cast in stone. We can always debate it here. This is part of the parliamentary process that we have. We're willing to accept suggestions. And I would just like to state that we have given also a chance for others to air their comments, and we are accepting the comments of others as well. As long as... Let us give the process a chance, Madam Speaker, and we will see it here that if there are amendments and there are suggestions, we will be willing to accept them.
Honorable Atienza. Honorable...
With the position of the sponsor, I'm waiting for a reaction from the lady who proposed a little more time to consider the issues surrounding this particular franchise. If she's satisfied with what the sponsor has just mentioned, then I'd start my interpolation. Otherwise, I believe, Madam Speaker, we should tackle the particular issue or the request of the Lady Congressman Bergara. Kaya pupe ay kontento sa sinabi ng ating sponsor, ituloy na natin 'to. At banggitin na lang ninyo 'yung inyong mga gustong mga panukala as amendments. O gusto po ninyong ipagpatuloy 'yung inyong kahilingan, napag-aralan nating mabuti 'to sapagat maraming dapat baguhin at maraming amendments. In fact, nagmating pucahaa nina 'yung mga private-sector oppositors and the gentleman sponsor. And there indeed are many valid sentiments and issues raised by the private sector, to which Congressman Yap gracefully agreed that he will incorporate as amendments these particular issues. Now, in line with that, I am still awaiting for the sponsor to put in writing exactly what he has agreed with or on with the private sector this morning's meeting. Then mahirap po naman natin pag-usapan sa floor at hindi po naman masakyan ng mga nakikinig, eh boboto tayo rito sa isyong ito na hindi po malinaw sa inyo ang punot dulo ng mga naisin, layunin, at mga pangyayari. So much has been said, Madam Speaker, on this issue. We, speaking in behalf of the consumer, are also being malign, saying that we are nothing but obstructionist and we are even tormentors. Tormenting who? I'd like to ask that question. Whom are we tormenting in this issue? We are protecting the rights of the consumer. True, we need lower-priced electricity. Dapat talaga ang yan ang asikasuhin natin lahat. Pero ang solution po ba itong frankisang ito? Will this franchise lower the cost genuinely the price of electricity in the country? Iyon ang tanong ng marami. Iyon din ang tanong ng industriya na ngayon ay gumagalaw na sa elektrisidad. So at this at this point in time, I would request the sponsor to specifically write down the amendments that he has accepted in today's meeting with the private industry leaders. And we sit down again with the members of Congress who may not be excited by the narration of the sponsor about a revolutionary technology to solve the nation's electricity problem, then we can all get together and agree to approve or disapprove the measure. But at this point in time, I can talk here and ask questions, but I don't think the members would appreciate fully the line of reasoning that we are propounding.
May the Honorable Yap please respond.
Madam Speaker, may I be allowed to respond? May I be allowed to respond?
Yes, please respond.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to answer very curtly, just direct to the point, some of the issues. We had a consultation this morning with some of the Elektric... the FIRRECA. This is the Philippine Association of Rural Electric Cooperatives. And allow me to just state that the fear of the rural cooperatives is that this franchise is just going to allow Solar Para Sa Bayan to enter their areas. I explained to them that under the Constitution, Madam Speaker, there are no exclusive franchises. Under the Constitution of the Republic of the Philippines, all our franchises are non-exclusive. But number two, it does not mean that this franchise applicant, this grantee, if it will be granted, Madam Speaker, can just enter any other area, Madam Speaker. It has to first secure the clearance from the Department of Energy if the area is underserved or underserved. So let it not be thought of, Madam Speaker. Now, allow me just to finish. I'm just responding, Madam Speaker. I'm just responding to the query. Let it not be thought of, Madam Speaker, that this grantee can just enter a franchise area without the clearance of the Department of Energy. If the area is not underserved or underserved and the DOE does not give the clearance, the franchise holder cannot go in, Madam Speaker. Third, on the issue of rates, this franchise grantee, if it is granted, cannot just impose any rates that it wants. It still has to go through the Energy Regulatory Commission because that is the government agency that sets the rates. So I hope that this can clarify some of the fears that this franchisee will go wild and just enter any territory indiscriminately.
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Honorable Vergara has recognized?
Honorable Author, then, can you please explain how come on page one it says the grantee shall have the right to open a non-discriminatory access to any transmission or distribution system?
Ma'am, where is that?
It's in the first page, section one, line eight. Line eight, nine, and then it goes to page two.
Ma'am, the grantee shall have the right to open a non-discriminatory access to any transmission. This is according to section twenty-three of the IPIRA, ma'am. We just copied that line from the IPIRA law.
And the grantee here being would be Solar Para Sa Bayan Corporation?
Yes, ma'am. This is under the law. This is under section twenty-three of the IPIRA.
So therefore, they can enter any franchise area?
But as I said, ma'am, we are willing to put the safeguards here in the amendments.
Madam Speaker, may we move to suspend so we can confer with the Honorable Author?
Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend the consideration of House Bill Number 8179 in order to give way to some administrative matters.
Is there any objection? The Chair his non. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill Numbers 8529, 8552, and 8554 as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? The Chair his non. The motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that we include as additional co-authors of bills and resolutions that are pending in the committees, the members appearing in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules after due verification of the requests for inclusion as co-authors of such bills and resolutions.
Is there any objection? The Chair his non. Motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move for the change of preferal of the following measures. One, House Bill Number 8259, amending investment restrictions in Commonwealth Act Number 541 as amended by Letter of Instruction Number 630 from the Committee on Trade and Industry to the Committee on Public Works and Highways. Second, House Bill Numbers 3797, 4194, 5651, and 6976, transferring to the Bureau of Jail Management and Penology the authority to exercise supervision and control over provincial jails from the Committee on Justice to the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
Is there any objection? The Chair his non. The motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Bicameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill Number 5745 and Senate Bill Number 1233 on the Coconut Farmers and Industry Development Fund, namely Representative Josep Panganiban Jr., Representative Sharon Garin, Representative Angelina Tan, Representative Evelina Escudero, Representative Ron Salo, Representative Oreste Salon, and Representative Edsel Lagman.
Any objection? There being none. The conferees, Congressmen Panganiban Jr., Sharon Garin, Angelina Tan, Evelina Escudero, Ron Salo, Oreste Salon, Edsel Lagman, are now approved as conferees to the new committee. So move. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, we are in receipt of a letter dated November 6, 2018, from Representative Carlo Alexei V. Negrales informing the House of his appointment as Cabinet Secretary and subsequent resignation as member of the House of Representatives. Madam Speaker, in view of the foregoing, I move that we refer the said letter to the Secretary-General for appropriate action.
Is there any objection? The Chair his non. The motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Move for one-minute suspension, Madam Speaker?
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 28, dated November 13, 2018, caveats of which have been previously submitted to the floor.
Is there any objection? The Chair his non. Motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, may I be recognized?
Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I respectfully move that the following be elected as Chairman for the Committee on Oversight, namely Chairman the Honorable Danilo E. Suarez.
Is there any objection? The Chair his non. Motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I also move for the election of Representative Winston T. Castelo as additional member of the Committee on Disaster Management.
Is there any objection? The Chair his non. Motion is approved. Majority Leader?
One-minute suspension, Madam Speaker?
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move to adjourn the session until Monday, November 19, three o'clock PM.
Session adjourned until Monday, November 19, at three o'clock in the afternoon. Thank you, everyone. Especially to us.